It's 9:33. Why don't we go ahead and get started? Could you please, the clerk, please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Flores. Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner Powell.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sacks is running a little late, so she said she will be here. But in the meantime, I've asked Commissioner Woodward to lead us in the invocation and the pledge. If you could stand, please do so.
May we approach today's business as tasks of faith to do our best within our power to provide positive leadership on behalf of our community and those who live and work here, and that our decisions meet the standards of divine compassion for all. Amen.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considering our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
No, ma'am.
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was an add-dilute sheet that is before you, and it's in regards to item 3A1. And these are just minor inserts, correction to item 2, which, to clarify, this is only to, for the bona fide, for properties that are not being used for bona fide agricultural. So this will be for principal uses, for farmworkers. And then just some clarification, it's the Glades tier.
Okay, thank you.
On 2C.
Thank you. May I get a motion to receive and file?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, all in favor. I don't need a motion to receive and file?
Yes, I don't need the maker and seconder, please.
I'm sorry. The maker was the vice mayor, and the second was Commissioner Flores. And please let the record show that Commissioner Sacks is here. All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor, all opposed. See, that motion carries 7-0. Any postponements?
No.
Okay. May I get an adoption of the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Weiss, a second from Vice Mayor Baxter, all in favor, all opposed. See, that motion carries 7-0. So we are now into item, agenda item number three, public hearing amendment round 25B, pages 2 and 3.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes.
Sorry, ma'am, be recognized?
Sure.
The proof of publication, the motion to receive and file, and then there's a motion to receive and file, the additions, deletions, and substitutions.
So we're missing a motion?
The proof of publication.
Proof of publication.
Still moved.
In unison. So we'll give this one to Commissioner Flores and a second to the vice mayor, all in favor, all opposed. See, that motion carries 7-0. Thank you. All right, we are on to farmworker housing 3A1.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, did you need another motion for the additions, deletions?
No, that receiving file was done.
Okay, thank you.
We did all those. I just missed the, that one there.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Okay. Farmworker housing text.
Yes. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Tweesh up for the record. This is item 3A1. It's a farmhousing, workers' housing text. You've seen this last year as part of the ULDC amendment. Staff found that there was references in the comp plan that needed to be changed. This would affect several policies in the comp plan. It has to do with the minimum acreage, 25 acres. So this text amendment would define the farmworkers' housing in the INA introduction and administration element. It would also remove the mention acreage, minimum acreage, in the housing element, and also establish criteria for future land use, the provisions of farmworkers' housing that is not associated with the bona fide agriculture use. Again, transmit, this was transmitted by the BCC on May 13, and we've gone to the Agricultural Enhancement Council twice, and they are supportive of this. So with this action, the board wants to prove the ULDC amendments can be done to facilitate and help, you know, incentivize farmworkers' housing in the Glades. So with that, we're here for any questions. If you want a presentation, we're prepared to do that as well.
I see no lights on. Does anybody want to press Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you so much. I want to thank Whitney Carroll for providing the Florida statute, and she analyzes it very, very well. Thank you, Ms. Carroll, for this, because what we're going to be doing in the county is following the Florida statute on this. And I, by the way, I think this is an excellent idea, and this is something that, especially in my district, is something that could really keep workers engaged in bona fide agriculture. And I'm very pleased with it. Thank you, Ms. Carroll, for that. And I didn't make any difference if we have a presentation or not. I'll leave that up to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the board interested in a presentation? Okay, we do have one card.
Jim Knight.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Jim Knight, 7:40, Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments on this, not to belay it at all, but I think it's a very important thing to do. I think there's other places in the county where you could have farmworking housing as well. I think right now this just applies to the Glades, have followed it. There's a lot of nurseries and things like that, and vegetable farmers and the ag reserve and so forth, and I think the farmwork housing could apply there as well. That's, of course, up to you all, but it's something that, if it works out in the Glades, I think it'd be very worthwhile to look at the agricultural reserve and some other places as well. I do support it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank staff for the hard work you've put into this. It's been a process. It's been a long time coming, but it's something that our farmers desperately need. So I want to just thank you again and say this will make things a lot easier for them, and I would like to be the motion to approve, make the motion to approve, item 3A1.
I have a motion from the vice mayor, a second from Commissioner Sacks, all in favor, all opposed. See, that motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
We are now on to 3B1, privately proposed tier change, Palm West tier change. Would anyone like a presentation?
No.
Do we have any cards?
Second.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve item 3B1.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? See, that motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on to public hearing amendment round 25B2, transmittal. This is a privately proposed flu amendment, AHS Pine Ridge PUD. This is in Commissioner Weiss's district. Would anybody like a presentation? Do we have any cards? Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve item 4A1.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Weiss, a second from the vice mayor, all in favor, all opposed. See, that motion carries 7-0.
Could I make a quick clarification on that one, if you don't mind?
I'm sorry?
With the last amendment, the AHS, I just want to make sure that is with the staff recommendate, staff recommended conditions?
Yes, I amend my motion to include the staff, staff conditions.
Okay, thank you.
See, that motion carries 7-0. Okay, we are on to the voluntary annexations in the unincorporated protected area. This has to do with the city of Belglade.
Mayor, I move to approve, time's up.
We're good. Bye, everybody. Have a nice day. Oh, we do have cards, okay.
On this item. Do you want to do a motion and a second, then hear the?
Go right ahead.
Comments. So I move to approve a voluntary annexation into the city of Belglade for Palm Beach Farm Bureau within the unincorporated protection area generally located on the northwest corner of Hooker Highway and Livestock Market Road.
Second.
I have a motion from the vice mayor, a second from Commissioner Woodward. We have two cards.
Stephen Abrams and Michael Mullen.
You can just wave in support if you like. Okay, there we go.
Okay.
General support.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? See, that motion carries 7-0.
Madam Mayor, there's a second motion for this item. So I move to approve a voluntary annexation of the city of Belglade for Race Track Inc. within the unincorporated protection area generally located on the northeast corner of US Highway 441 and US Highway 98.
I have a motion from the vice mayor, a second from Commissioner Woodward, all in favor, all opposed. See, that motion carries 7-0. We're now on to BCC direction follow-up, Heritage Farms, tract 72, comprehensive plan text initiation. Stack presentation, please.
Yep. Good morning, Stephanie Gregory with the Planning Division. So this presentation is a follow-up to board discussion related to the vice mayor's request for initiation of text amendments, the comprehensive plan, at the August 19 BCC meeting. Specifically, the text amendment would exempt tract 72 of the Heritage Farms unrecorded subdivision from the lot combination requirements in the plan. So this is the area that we're talking about today. The tract is located at the southwest corner of Heritage Farms, shown here in yellow. It's west of Park Lane Road on the north and south sides of Barn Road, and the tract is located in the rural tier with a rural residential, one unit per 10 acres, future land use designation. So tract 72 likely subdivided sometime around 1959 to 1960, and in viewing some old aerials, we found that houses started developing in this tract starting in the mid-1960s, with most of the homes being built in the 80s and 90s. This tract does have an affidavit of exemption, which was recorded in 1981, and that exempted it from the 1973 Palm Beach County subdivision and replating ordinance, which allowed the 22 lots shown here to be considered legal lots of record. However, these lots are still required to develop in accordance with its future land use designation and other comprehensive plan policies. Since this tract and most of Heritage Farms has a one unit per 10 acre future land use, parcels under common ownership that do not meet this minimum density requirement, density requirement must combine to reduce the nonconformity. So to give a very brief history of why we have this lot combination requirement, during the preparation of the 1989 comprehensive plan, the county had proposed a range of land use designations, including an RR1, one unit per acre, and RR5, one unit per five acre flu for the lands outside of the urban service area. When the plan was then transmitted to the state land planning agency for review, and that was the Department of Community Affairs at the time, they issued a lengthy objections, recommendations, and comments report that the county needed to address for consistency with the Growth Management Act of 1985. The state objected to the RR1 and RR5 designations as they thought there should be a distinct difference between the rural and urban areas and to protect agricultural uses from urban densities. So as a result of this objection, the county adopted much of the area known today as the rural and exurban tiers with RR10 and RR20 flues. The policy for the lot combination requirement was also included in the 1989 plan to require all contiguous slots under common ownership to combine in order to comply with these density requirements. So for example, if a property owner had two contiguous five-acre parcels with an RR10 flu, these lots would be required to be compliant in order to develop one unit. However, the policy also provides some exemptions to acknowledge situations when lots would not be required to combine, including if one of the lots had a building permit filed before 1989, or was granted one before 1990, or if there was a house existing on one of the lots as of 1989. So those exemptions would allow for the construction of an additional unit. In 1991, another exemption to the lot combination requirement was added to the plan called the 85% rule, and this allows a recorded or unrecorded subdivision to be exempt if 85% of the number of single lots of record meet that individual lot exemption if that number is equal to or exceeds 85% of the total lots. So if a subdivision does not meet that criteria and is not recognized by the 85% rule, the parcels must be combined. Almost a decade later, in 1999, the county adopted the managed growth tier system and established the rural and exurban tiers, along with the creation of the RR5 and RR2.5 future land uses. Through subsequent county-initiated amendments, the board adopted flu changes to these two qualifying subdivisions that met the criteria in the plan. So planning staff researched whether Mr. Noguera's property met one of the individual lot exemption criteria, or if the entire tract 72 could meet the exemption criteria under the 85% rule. And we concluded that under both scenarios, they would not be exempt from the lot combination requirement in the plan. And we also uncovered some additional information and found that in 1999, a previous owner requested a density determination from the planning director, where it was concluded that all six lots must remain combined to develop one unit. Then in 2002, a building permit application was approved, and a unity of title was required and subsequently recorded for all six lots. A house was then constructed, straddling lots six and seven, followed by an accessory structure added to lot seven in 2004. Mr. Noguera then purchased the property in 2022 and contacted engineering and PCB, inquiring on how to allow for the development of the remaining lots in early of 2024. So here is the tract today with a parcel control lines shown in yellow, and the pink lines that will appear reflect approximate lot lines as shown in the affidavit of exemption. So we'll start with the southeast corner and go clockwise. Lots one and two are developed. Lot three is vacant, but a single-family home is currently under construction. Lots four and five are also developed. Lots six to 11 are owned by Mr. Noguera. Lots 20 to 22 on the north side are developed. Lots 18 and 19 are under common ownership and has a recorded unity of title dating back to 1992, and there's a home straddling those two lots. Lots 14 to 17 are also built, and lots 12 and 13 are under common ownership with a single-family home on lot 12 with lot 13 vacant. So the next steps, should the board initiate a text amendment to the comprehensive plan, staff would complete the data analysis and a staff report and present the amendment to the Planning Commission, and then to the Board for transmittal and adoption. The adoption hearing would require a supermajority vote as the tract is located in the Heritage Farms rural overlay. And then following the effective date of that comp plan change, Mr. Noguera could then request a release of the unity of title with a concurrent lot combination for where the existing home and accessory structure are located, accounting for any setbacks and additional property development regulations. So that concludes my presentation, and I want to publicly thank Bryce for creating all the, this research. So he's really the one that helped make this presentation happen.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Baxter.
Would you mind leaving up the previous slide with the numbers? Thank you.
Thank you. I see no more lights on. Do we have cards?
Yes, we have five cards. Daniel Noguera, Elizabeth Akamondo, Risa McCarr, Michelle Burns, and Linda Zer. Sorry, we have two microphones.
Good morning. My name's Michelle Burns. I live at 10301 Heritage Farms Road, and I am here to ask the Commissioners to say no to Commissioner Baxter's initiative to let one of her constituents subdivide his property, which is only 1.5 acres. It is not a farming property, and he wants to add three more homes, he says, to give to his family to leave for his legacy. But that is not guaranteed. He may have gone to Commissioner Baxter directly, but I believe she should have guided him to go through the proper channels and not take it upon herself to present it to the board. Can you imagine all of you receiving requests from your constituents to make direct requests? Your time, the staff's time, et cetera. Why have permitting and zoning departments? Maybe I should directly ask to have my 38.5 acres subdivided, so I could put up 60 homes for my legacy. I could bypass all departments and save time and my money. The Commissioners also voted a couple years ago to pass our overlay to help protect any further density in Heritage Farms. We would really appreciate your keeping the density, and please say no. There is a process that should be followed, not a Commissioner-initiated request. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, your light is on?
Yes, I have a question for staff. Who initiated the overlay for Heritage Farms?
That was the district commissioner at the time.
And don't, they normally have to go through a neighborhood plan process?
That, that's the typical process, yes.
So the one thing that is being spoken out against was actually previously done in this exact neighborhood?
I'm sorry?
Was this previously done in this exact neighborhood where Commissioner was able to help her constituents?
Yes, there was a, she initiated it, and the board then agreed to the initiation.
And I will say that I never think, when residents are hitting brick walls with staff, and they're getting nowhere, I want my residents to hear me loud and clear. You always can come directly to me. That is what I am here for, to help them, and to help them through processes. So I'm going to leave that there, and I believe it's Mr. Noguera's turn.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say thank you because you gave me the chance to be here. Okay, I've been, and I'm the owner of 10920 Monroe. I've been there for almost two years. It's very simple. I wanted to buy it because my son is going to get married next year, and I want to bring my son close to me. By the way, in 2017, I'm becoming widow. I lost my wife, and one of the, one of the things she asked me is to make sure that keep, the kid close to me, my daughter, my son, and that's the reason that I wanted to buy it. I've been for the last two years, back and forth with you guys, but finally, I guess, today we're going to take a decision, see what is going to happen. I really, I really need your help to divide this lot. My son is right there, you can see. He's going to get married next year, and my daughter is already married, and I want to keep them as, close to me. You know, we are Latino, we really believe in families, and for me, this is a really good chance. I'm never going to have another chance. They have my, my own kid close to me. So that's everything I want to say. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, would you please explain to us the process you've gone through so far to get to this point?
Well, I'm approached to Palm Beach County, back and forth took forever. They say no. I hire lawyers, surveyor. I mean, I spent a ton of money. At the end, I also no resort. Finally, I decided to come to my, my Commissioner, and that's why I'm here. I need your guys' help. It's a good reason why I wanted to buy it. It's no purpose. I'm the only one. And my neighbor, they have a, that size of lot. Everybody living a quarter acres, actually at 25 feet away from my house. They built in the last three months, three new houses. We no issue. But now Palm Beach County, I want to apply plan, compensation plan. I don't understand much about that plan, but they say you can. So actually, I'm against stock. I'm the only one who got that such a big piece of lot in my neighborhood. It's no purpose, it's no reason.
And my question is for staff. Were these properties previously divided in the history?
Well...
Lots, I, I understand that he owned six of them. He owned six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. There was some reasons they were all combined into one large lot roughly two decades ago. Okay, I'm approximating here. And now what he's asking isn't to divide all six again. He's just asking for nine, 10, and 11 to be divided out from the other three, so he can give those to his children?
Yes, that's, that's his request that we know.
Yep, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Flores?
Sir? When you, when you say that you have spent dollars on this, specifically, how much have you spent towards the county, not your own attorney fees, towards the process?
I don't have that number in my head right now.
Staff, do we have that number?
No, we don't know what, how much he personally spent on this.
So he, he must have submitted some sort of application to the county, has he?
I don't think that he has.
Application.
There has been no, no formal application on the record?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Did he do a pre-application process?
It wasn't necessarily a pre-application process, but Bryce has, you know, communicated with him several times, and we've had, I think, at least two meetings with him, I believe.
Right.
Yeah. So probably, probably more than a pre-app.
And when you had those meetings with them, did they give you a process of how to complete what you wanted to get done? Was it possible?
Yeah, well, they say it's very complex, because my lot is not, it was not recorded. Palm Beach County did it in order to collect taxes, so they combined everything as a one piece. So I have to hire a lawyer, because it's a lot of technical things that I don't understand.
Thank you.
And that's...
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, staff. Elizabeth Akamondo, Locksahatchee. Well, I appreciate the vice mayor's efforts in wanting to help her constituents, but this property was purchased with that deed in place. And there's a reason that former boards created the rules and regulations in the plan under the advice of the state. And there was a reason why the rural tier was created, and what I see is bit by bit, the rural tier being decimated. And it was created because people wanted a certain lifestyle. And while I certainly appreciate the applicant wanting to keep his family, maybe the new direction that was given regarding the accessory dwellings would be an easier and less costly option for him. That's something that he can look into. But I feel that every resident, regardless, should go through the proper channels to make these changes. I would never call upon a Commissioner to say, "I don't, I don't want to have to do this, so just go ahead and, and push this through." I don't think that's fair to the other residents. Everything I've done on my personal property, while there have been issues, I have followed the process and the procedure and paid the fees to do so. So I just think out of fairness to all the remaining residents and taxpayers, the process should be followed. And if in the end, the commission decides to grant it, okay, but let's just keep in mind that the rural tier is specifically there for a reason, and I would hate to see this commission grant this, and in the future, maybe the children don't want to stay... And in the future, maybe the children don't want to stay there. And what happens then? So everything we decide today has a future consequence. So just please keep that in mind. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Powell, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And maybe for clarification. And I do think it's within the right of the district commissioner to bring this issue before the board as a question. My question is, is the, for the district commissioner maybe, or for staff, the direction to create the text amendment that would allow for a process for the individual, Mr. Noguera, to go through and subdivide or release the unity of title, then subdivide the properties? Or is the direction to do the comp plan amendment? And at the same time, while doing that amendment, releasing the unity of title, dividing those properties for him? And the reason I ask that question is because, in our understanding and the history of it, because these properties are owned by one person, they have to remain as unified. And with that being said, it is questioned that the property was purchased in 2022. So he brought the property in three years ago, paid $875,000 for it. And if he did that, and he hasn't gone through a formal process to be able to release the unity of title in order to subdivide the properties, is there a mechanism that staff has that could possibly do that? With the caveat that I believe that this should be studied and there should be due diligence on the properties to make sure that if they are subdivided, there's no harm caused to the particular area. And the reason I ask that question is because if you look at lots 14 and 15 on the aerial, those properties were recently, those houses were recently constructed. Those properties were also brought in 2022. And each property sold for $150,000 without a unit on it. In essence, if Mr. Noguera, if the county initiated process just allowed him to subdivide, it gives him the potential to, and this is just three years ago. So he would create three to four new lots at today's market rate or market value of the lands that I don't know if we would request a deed restriction. But in a longer, roundabout way, I guess I've got two questions. Number one, are we, for the district commissioner, are we trying to create a process that would allow this amendment, would allow staff to look at and do an analyze? Or is it a directive to say, we're releasing the unity of title? By doing so, now you have, now we're subdividing the lots for him? That's the question for.
It was my understanding we're creating a process to allow him to do this, were we not?
Oh, well, there's already, you know, the process established. But in order for the release of the unity of title, it has to be consistent with the comp plan, which then requires the text amendment.
Is it consistent?
It's not right now, no.
That's why we had to go through this route because he couldn't do this the way the plan currently sits.
All right. He would be required to have the lots combined. The text amendment would exempt the tract from the lot combination requirement. Then the unity of title could be applied for. And he would have to combine, you know, likely lots six and seven and potentially eight, depending on, you know, the land development regulations and setbacks.
Okay, thank you for that answer.
Commissioner Weiss?
I'm sorry, you spoke very quickly. Is there a process in place today that Mr. Noguera could avail himself to do this? Does the county offer that process today?
Yes, so we do have a private text amendment process.
We do have a private text amendment. And that's, so that is, that's an option that is available today for anybody to initiate a private text amendment in Palm Beach County?
Yes, they would have to have either an associated future land use amendment or a development order. But there is a process, yes.
I'm just trying to get, is there a process? And so are we circumventing our own process? Or there is, I shouldn't say circumventing because this is, it's certainly allowed for the, for a board member. I just want to understand if there is a process available that he has not availed himself to?
Correct, yeah. We have a private text amendment process. There are four intakes every year. And so he could avail himself of that, yes.
And he, has he, and did you advise him that there was such a process?
We did, back in early July.
So in early July, he was advised there was such a process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
For clarification, so at what point would he get to where he would have to come to us?
Yeah, at the transmittal stage.
And roughly, how much does that cost for an individual property owner?
So these are our fees. So phase one is the text initiation process requires a planning commission and a board action. That's $5,000. Then should the board initiate, they would, the property owner would submit the text amendment, $12,000. And then that starts the public hearing process, planning commission, transmittal, adoption.
And who is generally the person paying, coming to the county for planning fees and for all of these things to go through this process? Who are the general applicants for it?
Generally, property owners and their agents.
Agents, land use people, people building big developments, right? So this is probably a very small fee to them in the big scheme of their putting in planned unit developments, building multiple homes. But we are charging the same fee for those people versus an individual property owner who wants to come in and divide their own property?
They would be subject to this fee, yes, for a private text amendment.
Thank you.
Commissioner Powell and then Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The challenge I have with that is we're talking about $19,808 for a property that the owner paid $875,000 for. And in this process, we want to conserve taxpayer dollars. We went through and we continue to go through processes as commissioners that look at every dollar that we're spending. Yesterday, we spoke about Doge. Yesterday, we spoke about youth services and the need to conserve dollars. This is unfortunately an individual. And we're, the challenge is we've identified a process. Now we're talking about nearly $20,000 that our government would then be responsible for. Basically, I would, I hate to call it a handout. But if we're going to take and give $20,000 to one individual property owner, where does it stop? I'm not, I don't know Mr. Noguera's financial situation. But to be able to purchase the property for $875,000, and I'm a planner. If you subdivide those properties at today's rate, if you do three or four properties, let's say you do four properties. If you sell each property for $200,000, in essence, you've made the money that you used to purchase it. I'm very aware of the money that we spend as a county. But the challenge I have is in certain situations, we'll say, we've got to tighten our budget. We can't spend money on these things. We can't provide services for these people. And then we'll take an individual property owner and well, basically, somebody's got to pay that. And if we're telling staff to spend staff time, energy, effort, money to do these application costs, then we're providing nearly $20,000 to one person who is a property owner who did purchase a property. That's, that's the challenge that I'm kind of battling with. I do want to make sure there's a process available. I don't mind a text amendment that would allow the release of unity of title. But somebody's paying that. If, and if the individual who owns the properties is not going to pay for it, then the rest of the taxpayers or the rest of the citizens in the county have to make sure that they're paying it. That's the challenge that I have.
Thank you. Before I call on the Vice Mayor, Patrick, your light is on.
Thank you. Just a little bit of context on the text amendment process. The board created this about 15 years ago because there was no other vehicle for someone to access the board if they were asking for something that did not meet the comprehensive plan. They had to do this very thing. That was the only route. Excuse me. So we created a private text process. This board has seen a number of them come through. Part of the reason behind it as well is it's an initial check-in with the board. Does the board want to continue? It's not a full-on analysis that goes on. It's that early step along the way. Vice Mayor asked a question and staff responded accurately. So the board always retains a discretion to initiate something themselves. It does bypass a step along the way, absolutely. But this board retains that ability and has done it, as we pointed out. With that, one last thing I want to point out. We never contemplated dealing with it. I'll call it on an individual property basis. The pricing we have just addresses it across the board, whether it's 1,000 acres or one acre for that matter. So we would be wide open if the board wanted to direct us to consider a pricing level that would address individuals or something of a much smaller scale and right to size it that way. We can take that on.
Vice Mayor?
I'm going to let Commissioner Sacks go first.
Commissioner Sacks?
I think you're absolutely on point, Mr. Redder. Because 12,000, 13,000, it's about $20,000 we're talking about. And you know, Commissioner Powell, I'm looking at the amount of taxes, the property taxes that are due on this property. I have a lot of folks in, everybody has a lot of folks in their district who may want to act on initiation and things like this. And I think maybe we should look at a tier system for those who want to do it on their own and follow the rules and not have to come before us because it's onerous. So this may be something in the future we would like to take a look at, certainly. So that it's fair. And I think that for small landowners or small farmers or anybody, an individual who, and I hate to say this to our good advocates out there, but it would, you know, it would obviate the need to get an expensive advocate to do it for you. So yes, and I think that this is part of our simplification of the process that we will achieve soon, one day. So yeah, that's a good point. And that may stop people from coming forward because of the pricing. So I appreciate that point. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And I'm going to reiterate, I agree. I do think we should bring back to us some level of tier because big developers with a lot deeper pockets are different than an individual homeowner just trying to separate out a lot or two. And 20,000, if you sell it, might not be a lot. But you have to have that money to even start the process the way it currently sits. And, you know, I wonder how many people have not gone through this process because of how expensive it is? And how many individuals have wanted to divide their property and just found it was too burdensome and too expensive to even try to begin it? And we talk a lot up here about being efficient and trying to help residents navigate, you know, a lot of red tape. So I would appreciate that. And I'm going to try not to make any more comments and let Ms. Risa have her three minutes.
Commissioner Flores, your light is on.
I was just going to bring up, we still have public comments. If we can finish this up.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Thank you for letting me talk. I just want to say the fee versus.
Risa, your name.
Oh, Risa McCarr, Heritage Farms. The fee versus the gain in this process, really $20,000 if you stand to make, I mean, you know, you can sell those lots for at least 300,000 an acre or a lot. Those prices that Commissioner Powell said were from years ago. This was not supposed to be, your staff already said that, the dismantling of the properties. Your staff is telling you that you're not supposed to dismantle these properties. And then on top of that, two years ago, you guys gave us an overlay and said, because you're taking on this huge burden of these two horrible communities in your neighborhood, we're not going to give you any more density. We're going to take care of you. Don't worry about it. And now, here we are, doing the same old thing, chipping away at the urban tier. You guys keep chipping away at it. We need your help. We need you to protect us, not chip away at it. Mr. Noguera, I don't know his financial situation. But I do know that he owns two properties in Palm Beach County. He's running his personal business out of this property. I mean, that cuts down on a lot of costs. The, Mr. Noguera's been involved with violations with coat or animal care and control. There's been a lot of issues for our community. And we just want you to continue to protect us. He's not farming the property. He's not a legacy farmer. There's no agricultural uses on that property. There were, and then they were cited for them. Yeah, I mean, please, just do what we agreed on and protect us. Follow the overlay, please. Thank you.
I'm Linda Zur, Heritage Farms. I'm opposed to the subdivision. I have 15 acres myself. And if he's allowed to do it, I want that private text amendment. I want to go on the record as saying I should get the same thing. I too am a widow. I've taken care of myself for 20 years. And I follow the law. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for cards. Anyone else have any comments? I will say that, Commissioner Weiss, thank you. You want to go ahead and comment?
Yeah, here's where I'm at on this. I think, I don't want to support, I'm not going to support this today as initiated by this board. I want it, I want it to come through the normal process. It's $5,400 to initiate a private text amendment, which is, to me, seems a reasonable amount. And if it is initiated, that's when the other fees come into it. I think it's, it's setting up a precedent that, you know, if, if somebody doesn't want to pay the fees, they just come to us. And there's an expectation that we're going to, we will waive those fees by carrying this ourselves. And I just, it's not a path I want to go down. So I'm happy to look at it. If the property owner, of course, I would, you know, look at it with an open mind. And if the property owner wanted to initiate, but I won't be supporting it today. And I, but I do appreciate Commissioner bringing it forward.
Commissioner Flores?
Yeah, I echo Commissioner Weiss's sentiments. And I respect Commissioner or Vice Mayor Baxter for bringing this up. I mean, you can tell that she cares and she wants to do right by, by her constituents. And Mr. Noriega, you've followed the channels. Although I felt like you probably should have submitted the text amendment through, through your personal applicant-led process. And that's sort of where I stand. I think this should be an applicant-led application. It should come to us. We should make a determination then. When I look at those parcels, it sort of makes sense. As far as the fee, it is what it is. We set a flat fee for everybody across the county. I don't, I'm not about making exceptions for fee purposes. So that's, that's sort of where I stand on this. But I do, I got to be honest. I am in favor of property rights. And if that person wants to initiate a text amendment, I would have a very open mind. But there is a process in place. And I think we should follow the processes. And that's sort of where I stand on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think the district commissioner's cause is noble. I don't, on its face, see, and I haven't studied it, the challenge to being able to subdivide those properties the way that Mr. Noguera may want to subdivide the properties. However, without doing an analysis and without doing due diligence in a report and looking at it, we don't know. The challenge is by having staff initiate the text amendment, it almost seems like it's a directive for staff to make the finding that it should be allowed. What happens, staff, if you go to initiate the text amendment? And in your initiation, staff does additional research and recommends denial? How, is that a possibility? What happens there? Do you stop the initiation? Are you move? Or are you move forward with initiation with a recommendation of denial? How does that work?
Yeah, so we've had that instance before where the board has initiated, I'm thinking of specifically in 2016 when the board wanted to add farm residences to preserve parcels in the ag reserve. And we did recommend denial of that. We presented the implications, but you all as the board are, you know, have the legislative authority to not listen to us.
And furthermore, the initiation would only be the 5,420 until it moves on to the second phase. In the second phase, since staff was, since board directed staff to initiate the tax amendment, then, based on that initiation, does that trigger the board continuity, continuity in terms of every other process? That means that since we initiated Phase 1, the tax initiation, then are we then also because we initiated, initiating the tax amendment and the advertising fees, which brings us to the total of the $19,808? Or is the initiation, the initiation portion and then the client, the applicant, the constituent, yeah, we'd be that, the constituent who is benefiting, who's the subject of this initiation? I'm trying to get my wording correctly. The individual who's the subject of the initiation, responsible for the additional $12,946 and the advertising fee? Or because we initiated, are we initiating the entirety of the cost?
Yeah, so if the board initiates today, there would be no fee at all. So, that would cover the Phase 1, the Phase 2 advertising, because that would be a county-initiated amendment.
Okay. So, where I stand is, I do want to support the idea, the concept. However, the challenge I have is, if there may, Patrick, if there may be a tiered cost that someone has to pay, if there's a way, I'm very, I'm challenged. Because if you own a property, and most people, many of the people in my district don't own their properties, right? But if you own a property, you have put yourself with the ability to be able to afford certain things. And as a planner for more than a decade, I have seen individuals come in to subdivide properties. I have seen people figure out how to make the process work, or not work, with their own individual properties as it pertains to property rights. I believe, Mr. Noguera, you should have the opportunity to have this looked at and potentially be able to do it. However, the challenge is, should it be on the backs of us, you know, local government? Should we be supplementing this? Should we be on the hook for these costs? Should we be paying for it? When we talk about prices and government handouts, we're, I'm really concerned that we would be giving a nearly $20,000 handout to one client who owns a property. We would have a real hard time, and we have a hard time providing funding for social services and social issues. And we don't, that's a challenge for me. That number, you know, that's a challenge for me to say that we should be supplementing that much for someone who owns the property. That's a big challenge. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we have two issues here. First issue is, and I think Commissioner Powell brings it up beautifully, we're almost pricing individuals out of the market of coming in and wanting land use changes. It's a little bit, to me, and I, you know, I've been in criminal justice for a long time. If you can't afford an attorney, and an attorney will be afforded to you, yes, it's the cost of protecting your rights. We have a fee. It's fair. It's a fair fee. But it may be out of line for some folks who live in this community, in our county. So, we may want to do similar, and not today, but we need to look at it in terms of the fees that we charge. There may be a part of us that can say, fill out a financial affidavit, and this man's paying 5,000 in property taxes, which is not a lot. But if you, if we find, according to your financial affidavit, you cannot afford these fees, then we will have a scale for you to be able to afford to come to the government. We have to be affordable to everybody. So, I think that that would be something that we need to look into, and this is a prime example of someone, I don't know if he can afford it or not. We don't know if he, so, do we give him the 20,000 benefit without really knowing if he can afford it? So, I think we need to readjust our fees in the county to look at government affordability to everybody. And that may be just what, across the street in Justice Building, a type of financial affidavit to see if people can afford it. And if they can, these are the fees. And if they can't, we may have a writing scale. Second issue I have is this. If Mr. Noguera does not, I don't want to say win today, but if he doesn't get his amendment, doesn't get his application approved, does that foreclose his coming back if he can afford the fees and requesting the same thing? Mr. Staff, yeah?
No, he could submit the private text amendment, and it would come back to the board for consideration.
Okay. So, he doesn't weigh, he doesn't lose that?
Correct. Yeah, nothing, no action would preclude him from being able to do that process.
Okay. And I guess, looking at you, Mr. Rutter, is this something that we could investigate at some point? We may want to call it the Noguera issue, but certainly a, to review whether we should have, or we could review having a financial affidavit for those who wish to make, to do business with the government and see if they can financially afford it?
Commissioner, yes. Can it be done quickly? I would tell you that this issue on the affordability has caught the ear of Administrator Bruso, who's been very clear and committed to looking at this and finding something. My recommendation would be just finding a second-tier pricing, addressing it. We'll probably need to look at a little bit of criteria, but just addressing it on a much smaller scale, whether it's an individual, homeowner, property owner of that sort, but just setting one price, a different price at that point. But we could get that, we would need to amend the fee resolution. That could be done relatively quickly, though, yes.
Good. You know, we need to make government efficient and affordable to all the people. And I think this may be one step in the right direction. And we county commissioners are here to help those who cannot afford it, or are confused about it, or just don't know where to go. And I think that this is a step in the right direction to make it efficient and affordable for all the people. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rutter.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason this was brought up, there were several. But I will say that I am much happier with us looking at a way to make it easier and more affordable for everyone, based on, you know, potentially another tier. So, I would say that is an overall win, absolutely. And Mr. Noguera, if we're able to do that, I'm hoping you'll be able to get through this process a little easier. And working with you, and hopefully staff can work with you and help make this an easier process for you so that it then comes back to us through the current process. So, I support having that come back to us instead of just, this only helps you. I want to set a tier, potential tier system and a process that potentially helps everyone. So, I appreciate your time of coming down here. So, thank you for that. I appreciate the feedback from my board members. Thank you so much for your support on this and taking a look at how we can help the most amount of people.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you for that, and thank you, Vice Chair. So, are you amending your request to initiate a tiered system? Or what's the...
I guess, instead of voting on this initiation, I'm giving staff direction to have them bring back a tiered process, something that works more for even the people in our communities that can't necessarily afford the system.
Okay, we have a motion from the Vice Mayor. But really what we're doing is we're giving board direction. We're, the discussion today has led to board direction of, can you please bring us back a tiered schedule for fees? Okay? And I don't think that needs a motion or a second. I think that's just board direction. Okay? All good?
Can I just clarify? So, then, and while we're developing that and bringing that back to the board for your consideration, because it will take analysis of staff time and that type of thing, because that's usually what we have to calculate when these fees are calculated. In the meantime, are we asking the applicant to wait? Or are we saying, go ahead and submit, and you can wait out the process? Or you can...
I would say that's up to the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Flores, your light is on, and then Patrick.
Yeah, my input to this board direction is that you talk to the commissioners prior to coming back with a tiered system so that we can provide input based on the information that you gather, collect input, then bring it before us, just so that we're not blindsided at one of these meetings about the tiered system, and then we have to ask all sorts of questions. So, provide, get our input before we finalize that tier system. Thank you.
Patrick? Vice Mayor, your light is still on.
It just didn't turn off.
Okay. Question for you. The planning phases, the planning fees you have up here now, I guess, one of the challenges for us is, is there some, is it different for a single-family home versus a multi-family? So, I think...
Community.
Thank you. For multi-family development. So, those are the things that I guess we're looking for. Okay? Because, you know, if somebody's buying a piece of property and they're building a, you know, $300,000 home, I don't know what planet that might be on in Palm Beach County, but, you know, is their fee $20,000? But then somebody who's buying a $10 million parcel that they're going to put 100 homes on, is their fee $20,000? So, you need to bring those, you know, along with input from the board, you need to bring us the different examples. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Powell? I saw you moving, so I figured you were going in.
Just reaching out my mic. One, I think one of the challenges is, in terms of pricing, for staff or for a firm, when you are working on a project, sometimes these projects, depending on whether it's a large lot or a small lot, it sometimes requires, you know, nearly the same amount of work. And that, of course, might be a part of the challenge. But I do believe that, you know, looking at where we are in terms of the price of land, it might also, what we're not thinking about, require adjustments in terms of increasing the price for some types of initiations or types of applications. So, let's make sure that we are cognizant of that. And when, if staff were to bring back to us a different fee schedule that increases the price for certain application types that we are aware, land use is not free or cheap, I will tell you. It's just what it is. The cost of land, we're not building more land in Palm Beach County. It's not cheap to subdivide. It's not cheap to build a house. So, fees are expensive. And I want to make sure that we are aware of what we are asking staff to do so that when it does come back to us comprehensively, we as a board are cautious and are careful as to what we see. Because it's a real process that will require potentially some cost to go up for others if we are challenged to reduce the price for some. So, just, we want to keep that in mind. And I just want to go on the record of saying that so that when it happens, we are not surprised.
I think also, we'd also like from you all, a history of the, the way the fees have either grown, or, you know, how many times they've changed over the past and whatnot so we really have a better idea of what, you know, we're asking you to do. Darren, your light is on.
Yeah, so, as you guys know, the legislature adopted Senate Bill 380, 180, whatever, 180. And it prohibits us until October of '27 from enacting any more burdensome or restrictive regulations. And so, arguably, increasing the fees would violate that provision. So, we can certainly look at reducing fees in certain situations, but I think increasing the fees is going to be problematic under Senate Bill 180.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks, and then Commissioner Weiss.
That's what we're talking about, efficiency in government. And I think this goes right along with what all governments need to do, and we will lead the way if we need to. All of our fees need to be looked at. Can we do permitting faster, more efficiently? I have seen two trucks come out for county workers to look at a pool fence. We don't need that. We need to have maybe a drone take a picture, send it over. We need to use more technology to make our government more efficient. When it's more efficient, it's more affordable. We don't need to look at raising fees or lowering, we need to make it more efficient. And that's all of our fees. And maybe in a second language as well, I don't know. But this is a study that we need to do. And I know that planning and zoning would really, and engineering too, and permitting and all of them, would really be happy to see it, because it'll make your jobs a lot easier. And I think as a more efficient government, we can really lead the way in this whole state. Efficiency and affordability, we'll call it the Noguera way or something, you know. But that's why people come to us, because they need help. They need help in navigating. And I can't tell you how many people have come to me, and everybody here. So, yeah, get on that website, see how you do it. A lot of people can do it on their own, just using the computer possibly. More efficiency makes it more affordable. And thank you. It's been a good discussion, Mayor. Thanks for bringing this up, Vice Mayor.
Commissioner Weiss, and then Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you. Yeah, Senate Bill 180, that's going to be a challenge for us, so. But I think it's important, regardless of whether we can implement it or not, I think that you bring back that information to us. If we can't implement it, I still want to know, because we have to understand if there is, in fact, there is a cost difference. I think it's just important. And then we'll have to understand that we, in reality, we're going to be, if we create a tiered system, we're going to be subsidizing some of these, some of these applications because of the state. The other thing I was thinking about, you know, and I appreciate Commissioner Sacks talking about technology, but reminder, technology is not free either. It can actually be very expensive to obtain. So, and so during that period of time, when you are implementing new technologies, you're running two systems, because you have to run your manual system, and then you're implementing your technology and trying, you know, getting, getting one up and running while you, as you then start to wind the other one down. And so, that can, it's time-consuming, it can take additional staff time, and it's just something to be aware of. And so, ultimately, you will deliver a better product faster, and hopefully in the future, less expensively. But there's a period of time when it is going to be more expensive and take more staff time. And that's the other, the last thing is, you know, as... And that's the other, the last thing is, you know, as we do make these changes, are we increasing the amount of staff we're going to need to be able, you know, do we expect that we're going to be processing more of these? And so are we going to have to add additional staff and ensure, when you're looking at this, that you're contemplating, and I'm sure you would have done it anyways, but it's just something I was thinking about, contemplating if there is going to be additional staff requirements, then we need to build that in as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you, Mayor. And Commissioner Weiss, I think you're reading from my questions on some of this. I, I'll just be quick on it. I would want, when you bring this back to us to have a tiered discussion, I think it would be important for you to help us understand who is involved and how, the number of staff that is involved in this process so that we can truly understand the fiscal impact of lowering the fees and, you know, how much it does cost staff time? Because, you know, we, we see you, but we have no idea really how many hands have to touch any of these. And is there truly a significant difference between doing something like this versus a large development? Just so that we really can understand, if we're going to lower the fees, are we lowering the fees for something that doesn't cost as much? Or is the labor pretty equivalent across the board if you're, you know, having to have the same staff members touch it, because it goes through multiple departments, I know? Just when it comes back to us, those are the things that we need to be able to consider, because I think it's an agreement, we won't be able to raise any prices for the larger developments, but if we're lowering it and it's still the same amount of staff time, I mean, that's something that we need to know when we make that decision. Thank you.
So I think staff has good direction, clarity. Thank you very much. So that actually ends the business portion of our meeting. My, how quick this was. So our Assistant County Attorney, any comments?
No comments.
Planning Director.
Yes, just one follow-up. I had sent the board the follow-up on the Boynton Beach annexation. And again, there, right now, there are two applications for voluntary annexation. That's a part of the overall, the bigger picture. Just remind for the matter, for the public, there will be two upcoming meeting at the city for the voluntary annexation. It's called Palmera and Bamboo Lane. Palmera consists of 123 lots, and Bamboo is approximately 15 lots. And those, the first public hearing for the city will be September 18th, and the second, their adoption will be October 7th, for those that are interested in that. Staff is still working with the city to get all the necessary information that we would need per statute and making sure that all property owners involved in this provided the necessary consent. So we're still working with the city on that, but just to let the members of public know about those two annexation that's going through those hearings through the city. And that's our report back.
Thank you. Zoning Director. Nope. Executive Director.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know that we are working with county administration. We are going to be working on some new efficiencies and things to streamline, so we are excited about that, and we look forward to rolling some of those things out in the future. And then we are, thank you for the board direction today. We will bring that back to you. But before we bring it back to the board, we will meet with you individually to get your input.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll see you tomorrow.
Patrick? Any other board direction at this time? Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking to direct zoning staff to come back next month with an overview of temporary versus permanent green markets. This was brought to my attention, there's a farmer's market in unincorporated part in Boca that has been working with us to try to get a permit to operate. It's in a parking lot of a, the landowner owns, I think it's like a bank and an office building that is not in use on the weekends. And the farmer, and he's agreed with the tenant or the farmer's market to have operations there on Saturday mornings, once a week. And currently, we do not have a process for any green market in the unincorporated area to exist for more than six months in a year. And so I was having discussions with staff and there's ability for us to do a special permit. Green markets exist in at least seven municipalities that I know of, so they are operating. And most of them are from September through May, and some are actually year-round. West Palm Beach has one, Boca Gardens, Del Ray. But as far as unincorporated, we do not actually have the ability for a green market or a farmer's market to operate in this way. The current process that they hit the roadblock on is you can do a temporary one for six months, or they can become permanent, which allows seven-day-a-week operation. This is not going to, the landlord's not going to allow that anyway. So I would like to direct for staff, and there's multiple conversations that I've had, if there's more information, but to come back with us to be able to have a special permit to allow for a green market to operate in this way. So is there any questions on this or any?
No, and I think zoning knows.
Okay.
Jerome Arti, with the zoning division. Yeah, we are aware of this applicant. We do have a process, as you mentioned, it's a DRO process, and it does allow, it doesn't allow seven days a week. I think it allows probably max four days a week still, but I understand her issue, because right now she has to do kind of split three months and then take a break and then the other three months. But typically, persons don't go the full year, but I guess this is an exception.
Yeah. And with this one, I mean, most of them operate nine or 10 months out of the year, but we don't even allow for that. We would only allow for six months currently. And this is, and even if we could just find out what do some of the cities do so that we might be a little more consistent, because several municipalities allow for this, it is a special permit that they have, and we just, we don't even have this type of a permit available.
We'll bring it, we'll bring it back to you for your consideration. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Any others? Any comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to recognize a good friend and colleague from Belle Glade, Commissioner Reverend Robert Reese, who just stepped out of the door. But he's in the building, so, you know, and our colleagues are here sometimes, we want to make sure we recognize and acknowledge them. So Reverend Reese is a friend of mine, and he's here, so just wanted to say hey.
Any other comments? All right, we're adjourned, and we'll see you all tomorrow morning at 9:30.